Chief, uh, six percent of the government sergeant. How can your year to year increases be different?
Tom, we're gonna be live in one second.
This council meeting is called order in accordance with the open public meetings law. This meeting of February twenty first, twenty twenty three was included in list of meetings published in the Courier News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting is also placed on a bulletin board at Borough Hall. In addition, a copy of this notice is available to the public and a copy of the statement shall be included in the minutes of this meeting. Mayor David Sullivan. Council members, Granville Brady.
Here.
Tom Mitchell.
Here.
Gina Stravic.
Here.
Roger Vroom.
Here.
Fred Weed.
Here.
Randy Pitts.
Here.
Stand and bring me the license. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kevin, let the record reflect that Presidents Washington and Lincoln are also independents, but tonight I'll designate them as ex officio members of the council, just for presidents.
So noted.
Thank you. We have ones out of minutes for February sixth. Need a motion, so move second.
Council members, Granville Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Gina Stravic.
Yes.
Roger Vroom.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes. Departmentary reports, notices are as listed. We have committee reports. I'll start to my far left with Councilman Mitchell.
Okay. Uh, last Wednesday, New Jersey Transit held its first ever, ever virtual job fair with over fifteen hundred applicants attending. For those who did not attend, New Jersey Transit would like you to know that you have another thirty days to register and browse their virtual job fair. There will be a twenty-three minute video introduction to NJ Transit and documents and links to help learn about the agency and available jobs and beginner job applications. Applicants can register at NJ Transit dot com slash big. Okay, we have a contract to replace the main hall ceiling lights at Borough Hall. Sparrow Electric will replace fourteen bulbs in the ceiling plus all the lights in the chandeliers for fifty-six hundred dollars with LED long life bulbs. This includes the scaffolding. The Historic Advisory Committee is working with the DSA to do another tribal presentation for Native American Heritage Month this November. And the HICA is also working with the Recreation Commission to research the history of the parks and the people they were named for. Information may be included on plaques or on the Rec Commission website. And happy Mardi Gras to everybody, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Vroom. Happy Brady.
Oh, thank you, Your Honor.
Yes.
And, uh, that's the end of Mardi Gras, so I don't uncelebrate. When we move the payments for bills and vouchers this time, you may be surprised that I am asking approval for a little more than nine million dollars. Let me explain that one point three million is for the county, and that includes open space tax, the library, and of course, the county tax that we pay every quarter. The Board of Education payment was three, six point three million, and we administered their payment. And the Board of Health payment was twenty thousand dollars, and that leads me to my next report. The Board of Health met last week. As you may know, the Board must provide, the Borough must provide health services, so we contracted with Somerset County to do that for us. Briefly, the objectives of the Board of Health are to review and oversee the enforcement of sanitary food conditions, lead investigations, recreational bathing inspections, tattoo parlor inspections, youth camp inspections, uh, public health nuisance complaints, communicable diseases reporting and surveillance system, noise complaints, and temporary food inspections. And we have all of those activities in this town, if you think about it. The county will investigate housing complaints if they are health-related housing complaints, such as bedbugs, uh, hoarding, or excessive garbage. And the county conducts a yearly flu vaccination clinic. The county health officer informs the Borough regarding violations of statutes and ordinances to public health, and the Summerville Board of Health needs quarterly to review the health inspectors' reports, make comments and recommendations. The local Board of Health does not provide these services directly, nor does it conduct inspections, training, or educational programs. The final, the primary focus of our Board of Health is to ensure public safety, and it's a very important function that most people don't think about, but the next time you go into a restaurant, check it, check that little wall that sees whether or not the, it's conditional violation or whether or not it's been approved, okay? You may be surprised. And that's my report, Your Honor.
Thank you. In addition to that, we still have one vacancy on the Board of Health because of a resignation. So, Kevin, I believe we had it posted, if you could make sure it's on the website. If you're interested in finding out more about it, send your resume into Kevin at Borough Hall, and I'd like to fill that position, you know, before the next meeting. Councilwoman Stravic.
Uh, Environmental Commission met last week. Uh, they are busy doing the final uploads to the Sustainable New Jersey application. The Sustainable New Jersey application is a, uh, state system that approves best practices and measures our, our, the work that we upload to see that we are, we have best practices in all areas of government. Um, they're also finishing up the application for the community gardens, which will open to the public, I believe, March, March fifteenth, maybe? Um, and, um, more information on that is on their, on their website page. And lastly, mark your calendars for April twenty second, Saturday, April twenty second is birthday, and that's when we'll have pre-fair over at the high school, along with tree seedlings, distribution and plantings, and the town cleanup. So, um, encourage all residents to get involved in, uh, in groups, especially.
Thank you. Councilman Weed.
Yes, thank you. Uh, only report I have is, uh, a week and a half ago, uh, the Youth Services and Municipal Alliance Commission in Summerville had a very successful virtual Narcan training session. The mayor and Councilman Brady attended that, and it was very informative. Uh, we had, um, Robert Wood Johnson, Rutgers.
Oh, Rutgers.
Those Rutgers, yeah, Rutgers, um, presented, uh, that. And what's important is if you're not familiar with Narcan, that, that, um, helps the effect of an overdose. Doesn't cure it, it doesn't, you know, reverse the effect, but basically, if someone is overdosing, it's a nasal spray that you spray, and it basically shocks them back into life until you can get the paramedics there to give proper treatment. Uh, this is very, uh, important. Everyone thinks, oh, it can't happen in my neighborhood. Uh, I had a family member, uh, who, uh, lost her life due to her, her addiction, and I know someone who ended up overdosing on, um, heroin because of their addiction. This is very vital, especially in a town that has Robert Wood Johnson Hospital and, uh, in an area where there are a lot of hospitals, because overdoses happen there, so it's very important, and I'm, I'm really proud of the work that the Municipal Alliance and the Services Commission did. Well, Kevin, thank you for helping set that up.
Thank you. Mr. President.
Thank you, Your Honor. Hello, everyone. The Grand Council of Alliance is excited to invite you to attend their virtual, this time it's gonna be virtual, public presentation regarding their street, street grade capital plan on Thursday, March second, at six PM. The DSA will share concepts and strategies incorporating some of the public feedback they received at their open house event. Following the virtual presentation, there will be reserved time for questions and additional feedback. Uh, please go to the DSA website for the virtual presentation links and additional information.
Kevin, can we get that up, please? Borough? What's that?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Couple of quick things. Received a letter from the Treasury Department in Trenton the other day, back eleven years ago, there was a financial agreement undertaken with the Borough and the state and with Shopright, wherein seventy-five percent of the sales tax revenue generated by the Shopright site would be returned to the Borough so that that loan could be repaid. We estimated at that time, uh, fifteen, sixteen-year payment. Thanks to the success of Shopright, the confidence of the shoppers there, and the general growth of the downtown, uh, that loan has been satisfied, uh, about four years early. So we've received notice that, you know, that it's taken care of. I sent a correspondence to the owner of Shopright thanking him for, uh, not only his confidence eleven years ago, but his continued success in the town, and look forward to working with him again. So, when we, when we do a long-range planning, um, it's, it's not, not so much an educated guess as an estimate based on the data we have at the time. And we tend to be very conservative in, in money that we borrow, because it's not what you borrow, it's what you pay back over time. So in this case, uh, once again, we were on the mark and actually a little bit ahead, so I'm pleased to announce that that, that project has been completed. Couple of infrastructure issues. About a year ago, we had a DOT come out to look at several mid-block crosswalks in the town. One of them is on West End Avenue, adjacent to the parking lot of the Maple Conception School. There's a consistent crosswalk there, but we felt that there were some upgrades that needed to be done. So a, a rather large contingent of DOT people came out to take a look at it, and we hadn't heard back since then. Kevin outreach to them at my prompting about two weeks ago, and I think today, Kevin, we got the preliminary report. Kevin, could you make copies for the rest of the council so we can look at it? Basically, what the DOT has done is they've designed what they're calling, you gotta, you gotta love government speaker. This is a preliminary preferred alternative. So, um, it's a mid-block crosswalk improvement, central contract number such and such. So it's what they're proposing. Kevin, make sure the professionals that we deal with, circling over them, have a look at it, PD, Engineering, Public Works. They want us to get back to them in a timely manner. I think I use that in every correspondence we send to DOT. So they're throwing it back to us to look at, and then they can schedule the work. Had not yet heard about the mid-block crosswalk near your shop, Holly Maple. They were out there the same day. We haven't heard from them yet. So hopefully, we get this one done, and they can focus on, on the one on Main Street. We once again outreach to Somerset County to reduce the speed limit on East Main Street to twenty-five miles per hour. From Addlesville to Gaston, it's the last remaining street in town along with West Somerset Street that are both county roads. Last remaining section of that are not twenty-five miles an hour. Kevin, I assume you haven't heard a response yet?
Oh, we have not.
Okay. So let's give them another couple of weeks.
Yeah, at least we still are getting a couple of weeks.
We'll Xerox the letter and, and send it back to them. Okay. Two more things, even though it's getting lighter at night, that street lights are, are still an issue. Several months ago, I outreach to Public Service to do a lighting survey on East Main Street, again, from Addlesville Road to Gaston Avenue. I noticed yesterday two lights out, so I'll report those to them tomorrow. But I want them to do a general light survey, and it looks like some of those overheads, it's gotta be the bulbs, because they're, it's, it's very dark in sections, and there are no true crosswalks there, because most of those streets are T intersections. So I wanna, let's make sure, Kevin, I know I talked to you about this this morning, you know, let's, let's hope to get a response back from them quickly, and I'd like to go out there with them, you know, when they come, because it would, hopefully, they're gonna come at night, it wouldn't make sense for them to do a light, you know, a street light survey in the middle of the day. And just for the general public, if you see street lights out, each pole in town has a, a metal strip on it with a number. If you take that number down and email it to Kevin or to me, we have a, a direct contact with Public Service, and they're pretty good, for them, they're pretty good about getting those lights fixed. So I'll.
We do have a link on our website.
Is there? Okay.
That allows you to work with the right of appeals.
Because I know there are two out, and I have to stop on the way home and get the, you know, get the pole lumber. Just be careful if you do that, you know, don't do it from the sidewalk, don't do it from the, from the street. But you can let us know, and we'll, we'll get that done. As, as it gets lighter, the lights, you know, are not as effective, but they're still, you know, it's still important, we pay for those poles, you know, there's no meter on those poles, so we're paying for that light, whether it's on or not. So let's just make sure for the, for the sake of the economy, but more importantly, for the sake of public safety, if you see a street light out, just let us know. And that's all I have. We have one presentation coming, I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, Mr. Driver, who we've been talking a little bit about, the Summerville Civic Center that's under construction in the downtown area. And it will, it will eventually bid a fond farewell to this, to this beautiful ballroom that we sit in tonight. And, um, I'll turn it over to Colin to give us a, a preview and maybe a little timetable about where we're headed, so we can have a gulliway party for our twenty-fourth century street.
We don't have problems loading it up these days, we just unplug it.
This won't happen in the new city.
No, it won't.
Maybe for the first meeting, too, we get the case, or have.
Uh, no, we'll do a lot of training.
It's a large paper over, it'll lit up real good.
Yeah, Colin ran over the cord. I did. Here we go. Turn the lights.
Fred, you wanna get those on?
It wouldn't be a presentation unless we have a bit of a boo-boo.
Just working up, up the craft for, to feed your fish.
Long as they're not holding anything heavy and throwing it out.
That's our view out the window.
I don't have no idea what I'm doing here.
Yeah, it's all here, I'll keep you.
You're right here.
Oh, click, click.
Well, now we're in, let's go to the meeting.
Check on that phone sometime. Do you hit function F eight? It should allow you to mirror the desktop. Because right now, it's extended desktop. You're not seeing anything that you click on it.
Ain't technology, Grant.
Off of the days of the film script production.
We just off the document.
Or you gotta pull the mouse over there.
You guys remember how boring those slide shows used to be?
Yeah, but they were. Yeah. There we go.
Ah, well, thank you very much, I'll leave.
As everything else we do is a group, a group activity.
I can't explain one slide.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I will talk, not quick, but I'll go through the slides quick, but this is a, a rendering of, uh, this is Robeson Street, and this is the Avalon Bay Development North Side. Behind these buildings is a railway station. Right, right here is where the new council chambers are going to be, right under this tower. This leads to the eastbound tracks, and you can't see it, it's behind a tree, leads to the southbound tracks, um, the eastbound tracks. So just so you can get it all into perspective, South Bridge Street, Robeson Street. This will be the public plaza right here, access to the trains, and to Division Street. And right here is where the, um, Civic Center will be, or the council chambers, whatever we want to call it. The formal name is Summerville Civic Center, and, um, it will look like this if you're standing on Robeson Street. Pardon me, we just blocked it out. Now, what I'm going to show you is how we're going to fit it out. And this, this fit out has taken place, or the design of it has taken place over probably two and a half or three years. And, um, we, we hired people to work with us. For the furnishings, we hired SSP architects, and, um, I've done all the interior design, which includes what's called millwork. I'm afraid to move the chair in case I'm, I'm, the computer, yeah? But the millwork, um, takes it from, our agreement with Avalon Bay was we'd get vanilla painted walls, we'd get some industrial type carpet tiles, we'd get this sort of ceiling, and that would be about it. And we determined that seeing how this room is going to probably take place of this room in the last thirty, forty years, maybe longer, that we should try and make it look like a council chamber. So that's what we're going to look at tonight. Um, again, this is just another explanation of, um, where it is. What, what we're showing here is shared parking. This is a hidden parking deck. You can see it from the platforms, you can see it probably from Division Street a little bit, but, um, if there's no parking available in this plaza, which has limited parking only, uh, people can park here, and they're just, a, a quick walk to the Civic Center. Now, this is, um, a rendering by SSP architects of what it will look like on the inside. I'll actually show you the color palette in a minute, but this is a view looking from probably where, um, Councilman Mitchell would sit, and that's Kevin standing up, but it's a shorter version of Kevin, because the ceiling, um, is a little lower for someone who sits for three. This is looking from the entrance door in, and there's a couple of things going on here. Here are steps down into this pit. The, to the left of here, um, but it's elevated, and you see someone walking there, um, so that same level is what will be behind the podium, and this one is a ramp down and leading the other way around. The, these tables are for, are professionals or presenters or whatever. You'll notice too, that there's a television there, and there's one behind it facing the dais, there's one here, and one behind it facing the dais, and there's one here, which will be smaller. These are not accurate in sizing, so that, for instance, if I'm sitting at that table, or Kevin, or Paige, um, instead of looking at a camera here, you can look at the screen that's at the front of the dais, so you can see what the council is seeing. And, um, for when we've got the playing board, the board of adjustment, and other types of, um, boards that have large presentations, um, we're going to try and force everything to be electronic, and, um, we can do it that way, we save a lot of waste. So here, this is the plan of the space itself. Entrance is here, plaza is back here. There's a vestibule, a lobby, uh, restrooms. You come in, is the, the, the pit, um, dais. Over here is, is utilities, a small storage room, a small kitchen, and a, and a conference facility. Now, one thing you must bear in mind, this is also designed to be a shelter in place if there is an emergency taking place, such as Ida, such as Sandy, where people were cut off. We, the apartments will have, in both of the apartment buildings, shelter in place in the community rooms, but we've got a hundred and fifty-four townhouses out there, and they don't have community rooms. So the determination was made by council and the redevelopment committee that this space could be used as shelter in place, which means that if all the power goes out, we'll draw on the emergency backup generator, and there'll be power outlets here and within the kitchen, um, available, so people can charge their phones, laptops, et cetera. Um, it'll have a level of heat in the winter, and it'll have a microwave, so, um, food can be full. It's temporary shelter in place, but we're providing that as well. So the color palette, and this, no, it's computer-generated, so, um, you're not gonna say a lot, but... This is the palette for the restrooms, that's the color of the tile. Carpets, the flooring in, in the, the utility spaces, uh, different color floor in the, um, conference room. They're all, um, what did the designers say? They're, they're peaceful earth tones, which are relatively neutral, um, there's nothing overly bold there. Um, we also worked, um, through SSP with a company called Paramount Facility Management Solutions, and that was to provide, um, the chairs, the tables, um, and, and the other equipment going into this site, so that, one of the conditions was the chairs for the public had to be a lot more comfortable than the ones you're sitting on. And we think they are. The conference room has an array of chairs that, um, don't have to sit at the table, but if more people are required to come into a particular meeting. And what you see here on this table, and I didn't bring it up, but the other ones, we'll get to it in a minute, that's all the data points and the power, so that we can go into that conference room and plug a laptop into the top, and it'll show up on a TV screen in the room. So, um, we're going into the twenty-first century symbol. So I just want to run through very quickly, because there is a tremendous amount of technology going in, so, you know, it's pretty boring stuff, but, no, that's the, the, um, the cabinet for all the, um, communication modules, et cetera. Interestingly enough, everything will be controlled either by a pad, touchpad like this. This is part that will go onto the dais. The bit that I like is this section here. Now, we, we talk about ADA accessibility, ADA compliance, when, when, when we are in construction. This is ADA compliant for hearing, that we'll be able to broadcast. And if anyone wears a hearing aid, I'll be able to hear it as clear as a bell. So we'll be broadcasting to those that have hearing impairments as well. I like that. This is just a, an illustration.
Because then these electronic computers always work right away when you turn them on.
As long as it's not me, Tom, we're fine. These are the cameras we're using instead of that little doohickey, and, and, and they're, they're pretty advanced. In the conference room, we'll have cloud-based conferencing. These are just the ceiling mounted speakers. This is the, when I, I said the representation wasn't correct, that's the type of monitor that will be suspended from the ceiling. Uh, sixty-five inch, there'll be four of us. The interesting thing with, um, the, the goosenecks is that the system we're using, if the mayor is talking, he can switch everyone else off so they don't interrupt him. But in the normal course of events, if, if I was giving a presentation and someone, someone was having a sidebar over there, their microphones would automatically be muted. So that the presentation of the primary is not overcome by someone having a sidebar. Pretty cool stuff. This is security. We'll have uninterrupted power for everything, of course. There's security cameras in the council chambers. There's a security camera looking at the front door. There's security cameras, um, at the back of the, the chambers. And access will be electronic. It'll leave, I think we're, we're heading right now to swipe cards. And in another presentation I will give in a couple of months, we'll have the ability in another borough facility, print cards. And print cards that have access to more than one building. So that Kevin could print himself a card, access to every borough facility. Because he's administrative. Someone like me would get access to nothing probably, but that's someone else's decision. Kevin shaking his head. Smartphone access, um, tablet access, um, is, is going to be, it'll be probably state of the art for a good twelve months, I think. And this is what I was talking about a little bit before. I don't expect you to read through all this, but, um, Avalon Bay, builders of the building are donating this building to the borough. And we, we're, we're in, we're drafting, uh, we're in the final stages of doing a lease now for a ninety-nine year lease at no dollars per year. Right? But there's certain conditions and caveats to that. And as I mentioned, that they were to provide a basic box to us. And it was up to us to upgrade. And that's what we've been working on the last two and a half years. Oh, and I should mention, there's members of the redevelopment committee here. The mayor, of course, is the chair of the redevelopment committee. But we've got Mike Kirman, we've got Ramble Brady, and we've got Bernie Nevada. So they're the, the people that have been working on this project for the last couple of years. So, we're nearly there. The cost of the fit out that the borough wants is a million, one hundred thousand dollars. The cost of the space that Avalon Bay would have provided was three hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. So you see, pretty basic stuff. So the, the difference is seven hundred thousand dollars, just on the fit out. Features and fixtures, which are the, the chairs and the desks and the table, are fifty thousand. And the IT is three hundred thousand. So we're looking at a million and seventy-one when this presentation was prepared. It's already come down a little bit by that fifty thousand dollars. And, and this, this morning, I got another email saying we've come down another thirteen or fourteen thousand dollars. So we're down to about the million. Now, where's the money coming from? Well, Mr., I sat down with Mr. Brady, Mr. Sluka, and Ms. Elster a couple of weeks ago. And we went through this budget with a far more detailed breakdown. And it's determined that we have American Recovery Fund money available to us. We've just got to earmark what its use is for. And because this facility is a public facility, which will also be an emergency shelter, it applies for American Recovery Fund. So it won't cost a taxpayer a penny. And that's it. Thank you. I'll take questions if you have them.
That's the ready title completion.
I'm going to go out in a limb here, and I'm going to lie. I'm going to say August of this year. But I hope it's before then. But they've had some supply chain issues. So I prefer to be comfortable than have to come back and say, ha, not finished. You have to wait a while.
And by that, you mean that's when we, uh, it can start being used?
Yes.
Ribbon cutting and then it being used?
Yep, yep. You will have gone through your IT training. You learned how to open the door. All of that stuff, you'll be able to go in. And the mayor has told me he wants to bang the gavel for the first time, so...
We were, we were talking Labor Day in that, in that ballpark. But, but let's hope we can have one or two meetings there this calendar year.
Uh, we will, because the, 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 the executive vice president of Avalon Bay wants to do a summer, um, ribbon cutting. And this is part of that, so...
I would just add that this is not just a council chamber. We've been calling it council chamber. I, I would love to see this building used, there's twenty weekdays in a, in a month. I'd love to see it used, maybe one day off for cleaning. But I'd love, I'd love to see scouts use this. I'd love to see school, small school groups.
Yeah, we, we've put all that type of activity in use into the lease so that Avalon Bay doesn't, um, get any unpleasant surprises when they see every scout, a girl scout, or something trampling around the place.
Poetry reading, chess tournaments, Mr. Weed.
So it will not be open to Avalon residents on a, a regular basis unless they're coming?
No, they've got their own community room. They've got their own community rooms, plural, because there's two buildings. So no, this, this is, um, a borough facility.
Yeah, a couple of points. The, um, American Rescue money has to be encumbered by the end of the year, and we'll meet that criteria. And the other point is with the auditory facility, it's not relying upon speakers. So it's not like most of the time, if you can't hear, you get close to a speaker. These are wireless connectivity. So that if you have Bluetooth capability in your hearing devices, you should be able to pick it up as you would if you were right next to the person.
Another bit of technical stuff. I mentioned that the microphones will mute sidebars out. But if, um, if I happen to be talking, the speaker above me in the ceiling will shut down. So I don't drown myself out. Everyone else can hear what I'm saying.
You don't get the feedback that way.
Right.
Yeah. So I'll get that going.
So it, it, it's pretty neat, and a lot of time, a lot of effort. And they're the companies that have done all the hard work. Really SSP, Matrix, who are the equipment specifiers, Millennium, who have designed the AVIT system. It, it's pretty good.
These folks will show us how to use it.
Yeah.
A couple of times.
Yeah.
Good.
And, and Kevin and I, um, have been meeting, and we're, we're, in fact, meeting again tomorrow to go over all the, the back of the house stuff, housekeeping that we will need to do prior to this thing opening.
And I assume that our minutes and our agendas and everything else will be posted electronically so that the audience can actually see all the stuff that we're talking about.
Yep, yeah, no, someone, probably Kevin, will have this thing, and everything will be on that. But it'll be put up onto the TVs. Another interesting thing too is part of the security is that, I mentioned, we've got cameras. If someone decides to break in, they're memorialized forever. Their photo is taken. And in fact, even when we swipe in, the card will be recorded, and there'll be a photo of us going in. So if someone picked up our card and said, I want to go in there and do something, they could get in. And we've got them on cameras right away. So the security is pretty good. And hopefully, over the next twelve months or so, that will extend to other facilities as well. That's it.
My comment to the committee, much like the emergency services building on Gaston Avenue, we took a room and we designed it for the ultimate use. We're not trying to shoehorn anything. When this building was built, there was no concept that this would be a public meeting space. So we tried very hard with our partners and with the committee we put together to, to design something, not just for now, but at least as Colin said, technology changes quickly. I, I hope we'll get a good number of years out of the tech stuff. Furnishings are durable and comfortable. And again, it's designed for the use. So I, I can't wait to bang that gavel.
Everything that's going into it is essentially plug and play. So if something becomes redundant or out of date, pull a module out and put a new one in.
A lot to have a countdown on public meetings and...
Thank you all.
Thank you, Tom. We have several C V G applications. And the protocol is for there to get public, um, presentation and then public hearing on each one. So Kevin, we just do the one and the...
Well, I'll explain all three of them. Safe and sound, Somerset, they've applied before. This is for, it's a providing a case management to assist victims of domestic violence. I believe the, the appropriate term now is survivors of domestic vi- of domestic violence. The mobile part of it is that they go to the location at which they receive the call, um, and they're professional staff. And this is just to assist them to find both, um, maintaining a safe and sustainable housing program for, for, uh, those individuals that are affected to, uh, to resident. That's the safe and sound. The Y M C A program, again, they've been doing this successfully several years now. It's providing food to the Somerville students during school breaks. So when they're not getting free or reduced lunch during the school programs, because they're home, the Y continues that program and services those families. And they also, in addition to that, provide a round bag lunch program for, for, uh, ship, um, to, to their participants. The Zoofall Health Center is a brick and mortar, um, project. It's an interior renovation and floor replacement, as well as some cosmetic, um, work. And tho- those are the three that are making application to the C V G program in, in Somerset County. We will have at least one more next week. There are, these applications have to be in, and by launch twenty seconds.
Do we need a public hearing on each one?
You can, uh, you can open up the public hearing on all three at once.
Okay. Need a motion to open public hearing on these three applications?
Second.
Councilmembers Granville Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yeah.
Gina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Fromm?
Yes.
Fred Weed?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes. Public comment or question on any of these three applications? Hearing none, motion to close.
So moved. Second. Councilmembers Granville Brady, Tom Mitchell, Gina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Fromm?
Yes.
Fred Weed?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes. Kevin, is there a document from the aside to the desk?
Oh, they'll be in your box tomorrow.
Okay.
Also, my thing, I think we should point out that these are different projects and not necessarily competing with each other. There are different categories that C V block grants are given to. So it's not like you go for the best one.
They're, they're sort of different, different pots of money.
Different pots, yes.
All, all excellent programs. The Zoofall especially, they, they have grown so much over the years in terms of what they offer and the number of people that they service. And they have a mobile dental unit in as well. So it's, um, you know, most folks don't know it's there, but if you need it, it's on Fourth Street. And it's extremely, extremely invaluable to the health and safety of our town. So I wish them well. All right, we have, we have four ordinances for introduction only tonight. A note, twenty-six ninety-four, twenty-three zero two-two-one. An ordinance granting consented permission to New Jersey American Water, Inc. to furnish wastewater collection and conveyance service in the borough of Somerville, New Jersey. Motion for introduction.
So moved.
No, I can't.
So call. Councilmembers Granville Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Gina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Fromm?
Yes.
Fred Weed?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes. Orders twenty-six ninety-five, twenty-three zero two-two-one. Amending the redevelopment plan for the Kirby Avenue redevelopment area, specifically applicable to Block Fifty, Lot Two, Fifty James Street, and Block, uh, Lot Two oh one, Eighty-two Fairview Avenue, pursuant to NJSA forty-eight colon, twelve A dash one E T S E Q. Motion for introduction.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmembers Granville Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Gina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Fromm?
Yes.
Fred Weed?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes. Orders twenty-six ninety-six, twenty-three zero two-two-one. Accepting the grant of an amended and restated confirmatory easement for borough utilities on private property, tax block one, lot four dash colon one, Fifty Kirby Avenue, for the construction of improvements by the property owner within the easement to facilitate the residential redevelopment project on a property located in the Kirby Avenue redevelopment area. Motion for introduction.
So moved. Second. Councilmembers Granville Brady? Tom Mitchell? Gina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Fromm?
Yes.
Fred Weed?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes. Orders twenty-six ninety-seven dash twenty-three dash zero two-two-one. Amending chapter one oh three to the Borough's Administrative Code entitled Lead-Based Paint Inspections. Motion for introduction.
So moved. Second. Councilmembers Granville Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Gina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Fromm?
Yes.
Fred Weed?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes. I just want to mention that I'm going to have a lot of questions on this one. And we'll be looking for the concept for a ratification. These will all be on for the next meeting?
They'll be on for the next meeting.
We have time with the shortened calendar?
Uh, we do. I've spoken, I've seen it as...
Smart cells.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, good. All right, our next ordinance was for hearing and adoption. Twenty-six ninety-three dash twenty-three dash zero two zero six. Removing Article thirteen entitled Street Cleaning, Chapter one sixty-six dash thirty-one, no parking for street cleaning. And removing one sixty-six dash sixty-two, Schedule eleven, entitled No Parking for Street Cleaning to Eliminate Street Cleaning Enforcement Throughout the Municipality. Need a motion for the public hearing.
So moved. Councilmembers Granville Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell? Gina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Fromm?
Yes.
Fred Weed?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes. Public hearing on this ordinance. Hearing no questions or comment. Motion to close public.
So moved. Second. Councilmembers Granville Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Gina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Fromm?
Yes.
Fred Weed?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes. I need a motion for adoption.
The same.
So moved.
Second. Councilmembers Granville Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Gina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Fromm?
Yes.
Fred Weed?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
I would like to compliment, compliment Weed on promoting this particular measure, which has been a thorn in a lot of people's sides for many, many years. And, um, next time I park down the street, I don't have to look at the sign.
Just to, for, I know we voted on it, just for edification. First day I got sworn in, I told Kevin, we got to try and do something about this. It took six years, so here we are.
A record for borough government.
That was great.
Kevin, it's my understanding we're going to develop, we're going to develop a townwide schedule of when your street will be swept.
Your area.
Your zone, whatever your area is. So that people will know, with the exception of a weather incident, when it will be. Because that, that's been, I think, part of the problem over the years too. Long-termers, you know the schedule, but the, the schedule changes as well. So I think once we have the zones, it'll, it'll just, it'll be a lot smoother.
Then it will be voluntary, couldn't it be?
If they want, if they want the street cleaned. If they want the street cleaned.
You're right.
Yeah. All right, we have one resolution that has to be pulled for a roll call vote. And that's twenty-three dash zero two-two-one dash zero seven eight, affirming the twenty twenty-three downtown Somerville Alliance budget in the amount of nine hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any comment? Roll call, Kevin?
Council members, Granville Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Gina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Vroom?
Yes.
Fred Weed?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
All right, now we're at the open public meeting part. I need a motion?
So moved.
Second. Council members, Granville Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Gina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Vroom?
Yes.
Fred Weed?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Public question, comment period, open. Dress your questions to myself. Hearing held public. Motion to close.
So moved.
Second. Council members, Granville Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Gina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Vroom?
Yes.
Fred Weed?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
All right, public session's closed. We have consent resolutions. I would like to pull for individual discussion. Zero seven nine, zero eight zero, zero eight one, zero eight eight. Are there any that council would like to add to that? Okay. Start with zero eight two, authorizing participation in the Food Stop Food Challenge twenty twenty-three, designating Borough Hall, Police Department, and Somerville Public Library as drop-off locations. And oh eighty-three, approving and authorizing a special redevelopment council to execute mediation agreement with Thomas Miller Esquire for mediation of dispute with sapio entities on parking garage agreement. Zero eight four, authorizing payment of a five hundred dollar application fee for a grant from the Hazardous District Site Mediation Fund. Zero eight five, endorsing the adoption of green building practices for civic, commercial, and residential buildings. Zero eight six, canceling granted appropriation and receivable balances. Zero eight seven, affirming the Borough of Somerville's land use pledge. Zero eight nine, authorizing the usage of example CO Paramount FNS, a state cooperative contract. Zero nine zero, amending Resolution twenty-three zero two zero six zero seven four for submission of a hundred and fifty thousand dollar community development block grant for Carol Pedro Park. Zero eight one, authorizing temporary appropriation for twenty twenty-three current operating budget. And zero nine two, amending Resolution twenty-three dash zero one one seven, they have zero five one, accepting a state agreement, a grant agreement of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and ten dollars in the state of New Jersey for the NJUCF Stewardship Grant Reforestation and Tree Planting Grant. Motion or not? So moved. So I heard.
Council members, Granville Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Gina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Vroom?
Yes.
Fred Weed?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
All right, zero seven nine, accepting a donation of two thousand seven Ford F- three fifty standard cab trucks from the township of Holmdel. Motion?
So moved. Second.
Kevin, I'd just like to very briefly explain how this came about and assuming as fast as I wanna draft the letter of advice to Holmdel.
Sure. It is, this goes back a while. We had made a request to municipalities to, if they had any vehicles they were disposing of or going to auction, that we would like to have an opportunity to either bid on it or receive it at no cost. And Holmdel reached out to the Borough of Somerville and said, we have a couple of vehicles, if you're interested, you can use them and throw in your insurance and basically take ownership to them until you no longer have a need. So that's how it came about.
They have pretty good vehicles, the Ford, the F three fifty, they're a real powerhouse.
Yeah, I mean, we've also had this relationship with Providence Township earlier this year. We've had it with Somerset County. This does give us an opportunity to use this couple of vehicles. Now fortunately, we have been getting some vehicles. Unfortunately, a couple of hybrid vehicles that were ordered a year, over a year ago. They just started coming in now. So it's nice that Holmdel gives us that opportunity. And we would be using that, whether it be for fire maintenance or some other TPW functions so that they're kind of obviously older and vehicles that are moving on.
All right. Roll call.
Council members, Granville Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Gina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Vroom?
Yes.
Fred Weed?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Kevin, would you draft a thank you to the appropriate staff at Holmdel and leave it for me to sign? Thank you.
Absolutely.
Zero eight zero, extending the conditional designation of Oak Somerville LLC as redeveloped for property notice tax block sixty-two, lot one, address two to ten East Main Street in the East Central Business District Redevelopment Area for the development of a commercial project. Motion?
So moved. Second.
All right. For the public, this is the building just east of South Bridge Street on Main Street redevelopment project that was vetted by the planning board approved. The developer is looking for an extension on his designation to bring the project hopefully to closure in the next, sometime this calendar year. I hope to see activity there. I believe this conditional extension, Kevin, is for a hundred and eighty days?
Oh, a hundred and eighty days, yes.
So any comment or question or discussion on this?
We, just looking forward to seeing some activity on the site. Hopefully some window dressings to spruce up as other businesses have done. And hopefully we can see some improvement on that corner.
That will be communicated to the developer when we let him know that this, you know, this extension was granted. Because it's good for the public to see some steps. Nothing is, gives a more negative spin on a downtown than just nothing. Just like in my neighborhood, there's earth being moved, buildings coming down at the Baker Taylor site. It shows, yeah, it's not gonna happen overnight, but at least there's something, you know, there's momentum. So I'm hopeful that this will be the final granting of an extension. Roll call.
Council members, Granville Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Gina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Vroom?
Yes.
Fred Weed?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
And likewise, zero eight one, extending the conditional designation of Somerville Multifamily LLC as redeveloped for property notice tax block sixty-two, lots two, three, four, and five, address twenty-three to thirty-seven South Bridge Street in the East Central Business District Redevelopment Area for the development of a residential project. Motion?
So moved. Second.
And again, the developer there is looking for a hundred and eighty day extension on his designation. And I would hope that there's some cosmetic work that can be done there, you know, between now and the time the project actually starts. Any other question or comment on this one?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just say, we granted some extensions. We've really been voting extensions in the past on these two, but, you know, I have vivid memories of seeing a walled off chain link fence where the shop right is on South Darity. So I just, I feel comfortable extending it one more time, but I don't wanna start seeing that again for ten years. That's all you have.
All right, roll call.
Council members, Granville Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Gina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Vroom?
Yes.
Fred Weed?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Kevin, make sure that developers, you know, get resulted in a tied vote and insert the prodding for the curb appeal that we'd like to see start. Last one, oh eight eight, awarding a contract with Bay Hill Environmental B H E for certified lead evaluation contract services with the Borough of Somerville, Somerset County, New Jersey, to the total amount of five thousand dollars.
So moved. Second.
Kevin, can you just quickly summarize the nature and the scope of this contract?
Sure, this is consistent with the ordinance that Councilman Mitchell wants to discuss heavily next week or two weeks from now. Under the new state law, we do have to provide lead inspection services to every, every unit that has tenants in this town.
It's mandated by state.
Manded by the state. The ordinance is, we went through the ordinances in detail, which is introduced, which we'll talk about at the next meeting. It requires that the borough, so property owner would be able to hire their own contract to do that. But if the property owner require, a landowner decides, property owner decides that they don't want to, the municipality must provide that service. We don't have anybody particularly qualified to provide that service, nor do we intend on qualifying anyone for that service. So there are companies out there that you could hire. Now, in this particular case, the property owner pays that fee, but we do have to contract them, so there might be scenarios. So what would happen is if you have one family, two family, three family, they'll all be at different fees. And what'll happen is, we'll have to schedule that. The company will come out and conduct that inspection. The reason we have a contract with them is because we have to have a legal relationship with them. I don't expect that we'll even spend five thousand dollars because there should be no reason that a fee comes from the borough unless we need them for a specific reason for us.
Unless we own the property.
Well, we're exempt, I believe, from that. First of all, we don't have tenancy, residential tenancy. So, you know, I'll reserve some time next week, next meeting to talk about it a little more in detail. But it is a state law and it's actually in effect.
All right. So in some ways, it's like the requirement, you have to require a state provision, your smoke alarm's effect. Right now, if you're selling a property, you call the fire marshal, they come out, they inspect, you pay the fee, and that covers, you know, his fine.
Correct.
So there's no outlay from the borough.
The borough, the borough has the management aspect for it. So there is a fifty dollar fee that goes on top of what we pay. Obviously, we have to process checks, we have to, you know, process purchase orders and so forth. So it's about a fifty dollar. The cost we received from Bay Hill, Bay Hill, by the way, Philadelphia has had this law for years. Bay Hill is the company that has done a lot of work in Philadelphia. They're from South Jersey.